I'd like to call this January 25, 2024 Board of Education Regular Meeting to Order. Mr. Onagastu, would you take the role?
Mrs. Bissell?
Here.
Ms. Cobain?
Here.
Mr. Miko?
Here.
Ms. Thachek?
Here.
Mrs. Howson?
Here.
We are all present. Could you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on our agenda is our district goals. Our district goals remain the same: academic achievement and growth, financial prudence, and community engagement. And every decision we make as a board and as a team, we measure that decision based on those three goals. Next is our OSBA student achievement, and I turn it over to Mrs. Cobain and Ms. Thachek.
This week, we are honoring student and teachers from Maraski. Mike knows them better than we do. I have a whole thing written out, but I'm going to let you do it. So come on up, Mike.
We actually honor them in December, I think, for the year, so it's been a while since you guys got your certificates.
Absolutely. So thank you, Board, and thank you so much for allowing me to be here to recognize some incredible people from Maraski. Every year when you guys ask Maraski, I think I ask you guys for extra time and delay the process, not because it's hard, but we have so many people that are so deserving in our schools, our staff and our students. But I'm very excited to recognize these three people with this awesome award. So first, I'm going to recognize our student. So Christina Stepanovich, come on up. So Christina, thank you so much for being here. I want to recognize Christina with the Extra Mile Student Recipient Award, and want to start with a quote from one of Christina's teachers, Mrs. Doudra. She had the following to say about Christina: "Christina is an absolute delight to have in the classroom. Her bubbly personality brings an infectious energy that brightens up the classroom. She has a positive attitude and works hard towards anything she puts her mind to. Christina does a great job thinking outside of the box and problem-solving. She encourages others to do the same." I not only get to see this in the classroom, in the hallways, where Christina always greets me with a smile, but I also get to see it where Christina spends, I think, the other half of her life in a gymnastics gym. She goes to crossroads where she is a committed athlete. And the same thing we see in the hallways and school building at Maraski, we see in the gym, where Christina greets everybody and is excited to be there. She welcomes my daughter, who's a four-year-old, and interacts with everyone, including my daughter, so positively. She has the ability to give her best effort in the gymnasium, but she also does the same in the classroom. Mrs. Gibson also added of her that another one of Christina's -- or it drives Christina is her that she excels and extends beyond the classroom into extracurricular activities, both gymnastics and soccer. She has goals of getting first place in the all-around competition for gymnastics and participating in the Olympics someday. Ms. Gibson has no doubt that she will achieve her goals and be at the top of anything that she participates in. Christina is a model for what we want all our students to be at Maraski. She is collaborative and resilient and thinks beyond herself. As I said before, she interacts with all people, and she is a great role model for who I would want my daughter to be, but we want students to be at Strongsville and at Maraski Elementary. Christina, we are so proud of all you do and the positive impact you have on our school. Thank you so much.
Thanks so much, Christina.
Do you want to shake their hands? You can cartwheel there, or you can walk.
Oh, geez.
Oh, go in the front.
Congratulations, great job.
She's an awesome kid.
She's very modest.
Does it all. And works so hard in school. She's an awesome, wonderful kid. For our staff members, I'm going to have Lori Beetler and Jenny Zacharias come up. They dressed as a team, and I was excited to be able to honor both of them. These two individuals came to mind immediately when we were asked to recognize some staff as Extra Mile recipients, because they are both unsung heroes within our building. They are individuals who do so much for our school, but many people don't get to see it day in and day out. But we do behind the scenes, and they work so hard. First up is Jenny Zacharias, who serves both Maraski and Kinsner as a senior tech assistant. First and foremost, Jenny works tirelessly to ensure that all staff and students have and can utilize the technology they need to be successful in the classroom. If there is a problem, Jenny can solve it and will jump in to help whenever necessary. But with Jenny, it doesn't stop there. When we wanted to revitalize all the resources offered in our makerspace, help our student staff learn about new technology and how to use it to engage students in the learning process, Jenny stepped up. Within about a day, she had everything organized, materials ready to go, tutorials ready, and provided support, because she understands the role that these resources play in helping our students learn the Model Mustang competencies and skills we are after for lifelong learning. Jenny is on the front lines of this work, not in the classrooms, although she helps out there. Anytime she's needed, she's helping arm our teachers with the tools and resources they need to help develop our future-ready learners. She's passionate about this. She gets excited about this, and we know how valuable she is every time and every anytime anything happens in our building, each and every day. It's why when I go to Jenny with an idea to allow our students to do video recordings for morning announcements, 10 minutes later, she has a schedule planned and is ready to go. All of her work is for our students, where she goes the extra mile to provide students with meaningful learning opportunities through the technology we have in our buildings. So thank you so much, Jenny. The second staff member and part of her team, so is Lori Beetler. And Lori is our media assistant at Maraski. And the reason I asked if I could highlight two individuals is because I often look at Lori and Jenny as a team. So much of what Jenny steps up and leads that I just previously kind of discussed, Lori is right there to help her, helping provide students with those same opportunities, like her recording announcements, using our makerspace materials, and so much more. For Mrs. Beetler, it doesn't stop there either. She is the definition of a team player. Her catchphrase around Maraski is "How can I help?" I've heard this from her so many times in the time that we've been together at Maraski, where we're short coverage during dismissal, "How can I help?" We need help teaching pride lessons with our PBIS program, "How can I help?" A student needs a safe and trusted adult to build a relationship with, "How can I help?" Mrs. Beetler is always there to help. Every staff member knows it, and every student knows it. They know it so much that the library is a place where people congregate. Teachers will even head there and use the slow copy machines, because it means there's another opportunity to interact with Mrs. Beetler. She'll make you smile, she'll make you laugh, and support you in any and every way, because she wants to know how she can help. Mrs. Beetler goes the extra mile in helping us build the culture we want within our school. Both of these individuals are so important to our Board of Education to recognize them here tonight. So another thank you to Mrs. Zacharias and Mrs. Beetler for all you do for our school. Thank you for going the extra mile.
Want a picture too?
Yeah, we got to get pictures.
Coming to work. I love where I work, I love who I work with, I love our kids. Mike makes it really easy and fun. I would say, thank you.
I do know what Lori said, and it's true. We do work really well as a team, and I do truly enjoy what I do with the technology and with the students. And I always get excited, like Mike said, to bring things to the classroom and to the teachers. So thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, it's always nice to start our meetings on a positive note and recognize our students and our staff and our teachers. So thanks for coming tonight. Next on our agenda is public comment. I don't believe I have any. Is anyone with a burgeoning need to public comment? Hearing none, we will give a moment if anybody has homework they need to finish and want to escape.
Have fun.
Now, we are up to Approval of Minutes, which is part of our consent calendar. We have the November 21, 2023 meeting, along with the December 7, 2023 meeting. And next is Treasury Report. Mr. Onagastu, you're up.
Thank you, Mr. Miko. Before I get into the financial report for the month, I do want to take a moment and let the Board know and the community know that annually, every year, we file an annual budget book or annual budget document with the Ohio Association the International Association of School Business Officials that meets the requirements for the Meritorious Budget Award. We receive the reward for the past seven years. Today, I filed the budget report. For this school year, this would be the eighth year, so it is currently in their review. We would hopefully hear within a few months whether we met that criteria for the recognition again this year. But for the community, it's the budget report is on our website, under Treasurers Department, Financial Reports, and under Annual Reports. The link is there, and it brings you to this document. Just to kind of go over the document quickly, off to the left, it's bookmarked. What I would highlight is, although it is a lot of pages, close to 600 pages, I would highlight the executive summary. That's just an overall 40-page summary of the details of high-level detail of the district, the budget and the mission and purpose for this year, and the alignment to the goals. And then also, at the end, there's an informational section, and there's a lot of good information and historical information on tax rates, assessed valuations, collection rate, a five-year look back over the tax rate and the impact of a home over the last five years, and then also enrollment trends, cost-per-pupil information, and staffing levels as well. So it is booked, although it's a big document, I would highlight those two areas. If someone were to quickly go over it, view the executive summary, and then also a lot of good data points in the informational section. And if you're like me, if you like to look at district financials, there's a high-level report of all funds, and broken down the general funds, or you can go to each individual operating unit, school, and department and view their overall budget as well. So I just wanted to let the Board and the community that's out there and now on our website, if anyone wants to take a look at it. So moving on to the agenda, the first item I have is the financial report for the month ending December 31, and to go over the supplemental report as I usually do. Just high-level, current revenues through December are forecast in February favorably to the forecast by $96,000, while expenditures are varying $341,000, less than the projected forecast for a total possible favorable impact on cash balance of $438,000, meaning we would finish the fiscal year with $49 million and a $2.9 million operating surplus for the fiscal year. Revenue collections for December compared to last December. Revenue collections were down about $324,000 compared to last December. And then year-to-date, year-to-date revenues through December are trending about $1.1 million higher, and the biggest change is there is the state revenue as we got with the change in the funding formula, about $500,000 more for the year compared to last year. And then all in other revenue, the biggest change there is interest income. With the higher interest rates, we're earning more interest compared to last year. And then, as it compares to the forecast, overall, it's $96,000 higher. The changes are investment earnings. We projected about $2 million. Currently, it's projecting out about $2.2 million. State aid is projecting about $150,000 less than what was projected for a net of $96,000 positive. I will add, our biggest source of revenue is property taxes. We received our advance, one of our advances in January. We'll receive our larger advance in February, and then the final settlement for the year in March. So that'll really give an indication on how we trend against the forecast, as that's our largest revenue source. Moving on into expenditures. Expenditures are $286,000 higher compared to last December, and the largest increase there is salary and benefits. And then overall, year-to-date through December compared to last December, we're about $2.2 million higher, or 5.5% higher on a year-to-date basis. And again, it's salary and benefits are largest variance. And purchase services is also up $200,000 as well. How it's trending against the forecast, it's trending about $340,000 favorably. The biggest savings is in salary and benefits. Over the past couple of months, we've seen some employees either retire, go on leave, or resign, which is causing some cost savings for the rest of the year as those positions are vacated or employees replaced with less expensive employees. But overall, how that fares in total, it's about 0.4%, less than 1% variance compared to the forecast. But we'll continue to monitor. We still have six months left of the fiscal year. A lot of things can happen within six months. So continue to monitor and update every month. And then the last thing I wanted to point out, although this is a supplemental report, I wanted, the monthly report is attached to the agenda. And a table within the monthly report, this was an item. If you didn't get a chance to tune in, we had a community conversation about our levy at the earlier in the week, and one of the things we talked about was cash balance and cash flow. And what I want to highlight, as I mentioned during that conversation, is when we talk about cash balance, that's just at the end of the year, our number, a point in time in the year. So for example, 40 million dollars that we'll finish at in June, that's as of that time during June. Throughout the year, it ebbs and flows. And as I mentioned, we, our largest source of revenue is property taxes, and we receive those collections in July and August, and January, February, and March. And as you'll see in this chart here, in July, it's a small advance. In August, it's the larger advance. And the same thing happens in January, as we'll see in the next couple of months. We receive a small advance in January. It was around a little under $4 million for this past January. February would be the larger amount, and then March, we'll probably receive around $5 million. But as you'll see, our operating expenses are close to, between $6 and $7 million a month. And each month, we're drawing down on that advance that we get. So it's a cat, by having some of the balances we have, it prevents that cash, it helps with the cash flow. As you see each month, we're, other than August and February, we're spending more each month than what we're bringing in. So I just kind of wanted to highlight that based on where we're at. And then fiscal year-to-date through December, that $20 million that we received in August, through December, the net change in cash is $98,000. And we received that settlement, not settlement, the advance that we got in January, it was January 15, and we had a payroll January 10. So through that point in period, we would have spent more than what we brought in for the fiscal year. Any questions? Hearing none, so moving on to grant approval. Item two, be resolved upon the recommendation of the Treasurer that the following grant be approved for fiscal year '24. It's a SCF grant award for Coach's Clinic through the Rademacher Miller Grant under the Strongsville Education Foundation of $680 for the track and cross-country coaches to attend the clinic. Two new student activity program budgets, purposes, and goals. A middle school Cedar Point incentive trip student activities account and a middle school club softball account. The Cedar Point incentive trip, their budget is $17,000, and the club softball, about $1,985. Just like any other student activity funds, these funds are raised by the student groups, and those monies are deposited in the student activity account and spent by the student activity account. Item four, two new funds, which are the Cedar Point incentive trip and the club softball for the middle school. Moving on to item five. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the Treasurer that the following student activity program budget revisions for fiscal year '24 be approved. These are all '14 Internal Service Rotary Fund accounts for the elementaries for their field trip. They need budget increases from what we had originally budgeted during the year. At the elementary level for fourth and fifth grade during the year, they had that new rollers, in-house roller skating field trip, which caused their budget to increase, and the increase is going to go towards funds they collect for the spring field trips that will be done. Item six, fiscal year '24 amended appropriations. Be resolved upon the recommendation of the Treasurer that the amended appropriations be approved. The items are the student activity funds and the field trips that we just discussed, and then also two federal grants that are listed in the agenda for carryover reallocation. Item seven, invoice order approval. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the Treasurer that in accordance with ORC for after-the-fact invoices, the Board approves the following invoice or payment, and the Treasurer be authorized to sign the fiscal certificate. It is for vendor try S. Purchase order 241913. The PO date was 12/5/23 for $6,170, and the purchase date was October 3, 2023. And this was for an emergency repair for the fire panel at Kinsner that needed to be done immediately. Number eight, be resolved upon the recommendation of the Treasurer that the Board of Education retains Don Evangelista as fiscal consultant to the Treasurer's Department. Time will be as needed and paid by invoice through the accounts payable at a rate of $34.88 per hour to help with the transition as we continue to transition Melissa with the, in the new position. And the last item, number nine, and this requires a separate vote. Be it resolved upon the recommendation of the Treasurer that the resolution for ACH and electronic transactions with Lorraine County be approved.
Do I have a motion?
Summled.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Howson, second by Ms. Thachek. Any discussion?
Yeah, so I'll add what this is. This is Lorraine County. Currently, we have a small portion of the school district that falls within Lorraine County. And when they send us their tax settlement, it's usually a check by mail. They're changing their procedures and doing ACH payments. In order for us to approve the ACH, receive the ACH payments, they would like a resolution approved by the Board that authorizes me to sign up for that program.
And with postage going up every, it seems like every other quarter, they probably want to save on postage, and Lord knows, we want to save on it too. Any other discussion? Please take the roll.
Mrs. Howson?
Yes.
Ms. Thachek?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Ms. Cobain?
Yes.
And Mr. Miko?
Yes, and the motion carries.
And if there's no further questions, that concludes my report.
Any questions for George? I just want to take a moment to publicly thank you for the budget book. It probably says a lot about me, but I get excited every year when the new edition comes out. It reminds me of being young and waiting for the world book, yearbook, to come out. But it is, although we're, although I'm trying to be humorous, it is an invaluable tool for the Board and for everyone in the district. Prior to us creating that book, prior to George creating that book, there would be time after time where we would go, you know, I wonder, how much did we pay for something seven years ago? Or, you know, what stat, what dollar amount, what whatever? And it would always be a new request, and, you know, we'd have to weigh whether it's worth trying to collect the information. And now, all that information is in one place. 600 pages is a lot, but all the information is in one place. And whenever we have those questions, so that we can make informed decisions, we know where to go. And I remember the first versions, we would print the books, but I like having it as a PDF, because you just do a Ctrl+F, and you get, if you have some facility or some skill with how to search, you can zero in on what you're looking for pretty quick. So again, thank you for the hard work, well deserved.
Thank you.
Next on our agenda is Superintendent's Report. Dr. Iba?
Thank you, Mr. Miko. I have a couple of items under my report. First of all, everybody's favorite month is January, right? Because it's Board Appreciation Month. And, you know, George is going to put up your beautiful pictures up here. Scott's going to zoom in on that, so everybody could see at home how blessed we are to have a wonderful Board of Education. And in all seriousness, you know, it is a great opportunity to say thank you for all that you do. And, you know, I know the public sees us get together twice a month, but there's a tremendous amount of work that goes on behind the scenes every week, constantly. And it's a tremendous responsibility that all five of you take on, and we just want to thank you for the work that you do. You go to professional development sessions to develop your skills. Rich was with us Tuesday night, helping to support our community conversation. You're at committees, you're on the phone, you're meeting with different folks, you're in the buildings, so you can get a pulse of what's going on and do your job to lead and support the school district. So on behalf of my administrative colleagues and all the teachers and staff and parents and community, I just want to say thank you for stepping up and taking on these positions and leading. You may not always feel the gratitude, but know that it's there, especially during times like this where the district is continuing to evolve and grow. And with all the successes, there's also challenges to face. So we're blessed to have you a part of the team and leading the way forward. So thank you. And one of your roles as a Board member is to get out and about and be a part of all that's going on. And sometimes that means raving the outdoor elements. So as a small token of appreciation, we've got you monogrammed stadium blankets to try and keep you a little bit warm during the cold weather. So round of applause for our Board members on all that they do.
That was a totally different route than I thought it was going to be. I thought it was going to be like one of those Jib-Jab videos of our faces like snowboarding or something. Like, this is what they did this past weekend. Kind of relieved.
Thank you, those were nice.
Thank you.
So thanks again, and to all of your joy, we will move on to the next agenda topic. So the second part of the agenda is a loopback from last meeting where we talked about the academic calendar. So George, if you can, yeah, thank you, just put up the 24, 25. So based on the Board's guidance, we reopen the survey to our staff, parents, and community. Got some more feedback there. I also looped back to our two I also looped back to our two committees that had a voice in this work, our parent-teacher conference committee, as well as our calendar committee. And based on factoring all of that in there, so the, the most pressing feedback from the survey was the orange days. The orange days, as a reminder, are those days where not all kids were in school in the same time, and we had four of those. And so what we took a look at with the calendars, as you can see, is the change that we are recommending from what you saw previously is October. So in getting that feedback and talking to the specific committees, they said, okay, we, we hear that, we feel we can get rid of the orange days in October. And so what's here, we've changed the colors a little, teal, I guess you would say, whatever that light blue color is. That is going to be the full day of parent-teacher conferences. So instead of separating that in two days, it's going to be one day, pre-K to 12. So again, as a reminder, one of the rationales was helping families with kids in multiple district, or multiple buildings or levels, to try and get to all of the conferences. The feeling was, is hey, you could probably get to at least, if you have kids in three levels, get to at least two, and then you've got another day where you, in the evening where you can get to the other level if necessary. So in this example, October 3rd, there will be no school for students on that day. That's going to be a conference day. It goes, I think it's 11:30 to 7:30, that range. And then what we did is we have the, two evenings would now be on October 9th and 23rd. The 9th would be for grades six to 12, and the 23rd would be for grades pre-K to five. School would be in session, we'd have evening conferences, same as we've done the last five or six years. We did make an adjustment, those were supposed to be on Thursday. We moved those to Wednesday, moved the all-day conference, which was on Wednesday, to Thursday. The reason being is the secondary folks gave feedback that having it on the 10th before the 11th, which is a day off for everybody, they, they, attendance was down a little bit. So if they put it on Wednesday, not next to a day off, they're hoping to get more parental attendance for those that may go away for a long weekend. The same pattern holds true on the 25, 26 calendar, so I won't go through the details there. It was a strong recommendation that I support from the committee that we keep the rest of the orange days. So that, that keeps two remaining, so George, you can see it on December. December 20th would be a day that was in the original proposed calendar, that would remain. Students in grades pre, or grades K to five would be in school, and grades six to 12 would not be in school. And then the, I think I explained it last time as to why that's the case, but if you want me to re-explain it, okay, I'll re-explain it. So per the contract, secondary teachers are afforded a records day, grading exams, finishing up grades for the first semester, and it needs to be done at the end of the first semester. So that has to be there. Kids don't attend school in, in grades six to 12 because that day has to be given to, per our contract, for teachers six to 12. So the question is, what do we do with grades pre-K to five? Because they don't need to have that, those teachers don't have a records day on that day. And so the only option that we could have is we can make it a professional development day. So that's the only way we can make sure that all kids are off and all teachers are working. However, making it a professional development day the day before a two-week winter break at the end of semester when realistically adults are tired, it is not a beneficial use of that day or use of that time. We also heard parental feedback saying, hey, if we have, for some parents, I can let my middle schooler or high schooler stay home, I can work. If I have an elementary child home, I've got to take off. With the two-week break, that's another day that I have to take off. We'd rather have Friday be able to work as a parent and then have the next two weeks to deal with childcare when our kids are off. So it was a parent benefit, it was a staff benefit. We felt strongly, and the committee felt strongly, that that should stay. Same rationale for, similar rationale for February. February 28th is the records day for pre-K to five, it's the end of their trimester. Pre-K to five would have that day off. Six to 12, we have coming to school. One of the options to solve that solution would be to make it a professional development day. We could, it doesn't have the same rationale as December. It could be a meaningful professional development day, but that leaves, besides the last Friday, a long month in March without a long weekend. And March is a, I had my student advisory council, Mr. Faust and I met with our student advisory council the other day, and we talked about with them, like January, February, March, from a student perspective and an adult perspective, is a long stretch. The weather's not good, you know, it's kind of in the middle, middle ground of it. So having that March day as a, as a three-day weekend for, for parents and kids and giving staff professional development, it paces out our professional development, helps to have a day off, a three-day weekend there, and hopefully with reducing two of the orange days is a limited burden on parents to deal with childcare. So the rest of the calendar remains the same, that's the rationale for keeping the two orange days. The rationale for eliminating the two, and are there any questions of clarification? Because this is a separate vote item, I believe. No, it's consent. So any other questions on this item?
Anyone? I was just going to share with the public, again, we're, we're voting on two calendars, but we always have the ability to pivot and course, course adjust. Some of the things that we're doing in this calendar are new, so they're experiments. Make sure to let your teachers, principals, admin board know if the experiment isn't working well for you at home, and then if we, if necessary, we'll cross-course correct, and if not, we'll, we'll continue it. I always, you know, I was, when we talk about parent-teacher conferences, we've had that conversation before. When do we look at them as something antiquated that we don't necessarily need to dedicate days for parents to come into the building on a specific time and date to talk with their teachers? May have made sense, probably did make sense a long time ago, but with all of the, with all the virtual tools we have today, maybe it's time to say, you know, do we need to have the burden of, of a scheduled parent-teacher conference? And that's not something we're going to do now, but it's certainly something to talk about. Thank you.
All right. With that, we do not have any items under business services this month, so I'll turn over to our Director of Curriculum, Erin Green, for her report.
Good evening, and I'd like to echo the thanks that Cameron gave. Thank you for all of your time and effort you put into the board. I have four items tonight for your consideration. First item is a student-teacher memorandum of understanding with Baldwin Wallace University and Strongsville City School District. Second item is another student-teacher memorandum of, memorandum of understanding, this one with University of Mount Union and Strongsville City School District. And again, these just allow us to partner with these colleges and universities so that they can place their student teachers with us, and we have everything that we need paper-wise and, you know, ensuring that our, the student teachers are background-checked and those type of things. Item three is a student-teacher placement. There are two here. One is for, the first one for January 13th through May 2nd of 2025, so a year from now. That's going to be at Strongsville High School. And the second one is at Strongsville Middle School. That's currently happening, January 9th through May 10th, student from Mount Union. So be it resolved upon the recommendation that those student teachers shall be placed. And the final item tonight, we have a revision from the October 26th, 2023 agenda. And be it resolved upon the recommendation of the superintendent that the following revision be made. So we are doing a revision for the superintendent report under curriculum. Number three, it was a service agreement for Incarnate Word. They were using PSI Affiliates Incorporated. They would like to change their service provider to Forge Edu LLC for the amount of $4,698.12.
Any questions for Erin?
Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Erin. We don't, we do not have anything under student services, and so we'll move on to human resources.
Thank you, Dr. Raiba. Under human resources this evening, I have the following items for your consideration. We have a resignation for non-certificated staff, resignation for a certificated athletic supplemental contract. We have two retirements for certificated staff, a retirement for non-certificated staff, appointments for certificated staff, appointments for non-certificated staff, appointments for certificated substitutes, and appointments for non-certificated substitutes, appointment for a certificated district substitute, appointments for certificated athletic supplemental contracts, appointments for non-certificated athletic supplemental contracts, appointments for certificated supplemental contracts. Under 13, changes in hours for non-certificated staff, changes in status for non-certificated staff, contract recommendations for non-certificated staff for continuing contracts. Under 16, we have stipends for literacy coaches. 17, we have textbook selection, a stipend for that. Under 18, leaves of absence for an administrative staff member, leaves of absence for a certificated staff member, leaves of absence for a non-certificated staff member, unpaid leaves for certificated staff, unpaid leaves for non-certificated staff, volunteers, and finally, volunteer coaches. And that concludes my report.
Any questions for Jenny? We do not have anything under technology, so with that, that concludes my report.
Any questions for Cameron? Next on our agenda is report on Polaris Career Center. Mrs. Bissell.
Thank you. Laura and I shared most of the updates last meeting. So just a couple of things to highlight today. Our eighth graders had the opportunity the past two days to visit Polaris and start considering whether Polaris is the right choice for them as they look to schedule their high school classes. So hopefully that was an enlightening and exciting trip for them. And then just a shout out to one of our Strongsville High School students, Ella James. She's in the cosmetology program at Polaris, and she's one of the Polaris ambassadors. And she says that her favorite thing about Polaris is all of the friends she's made inside and outside of her program. So Polaris continues to be a wonderful opportunity for our students, and we will keep you updated on new things that are happening.
Thank you, Michelle. Next is report on legislation. That's me. The one, one thing that I wanted to highlight for the community was that the House Primary and Secondary Education Committee heard sponsor testimony a week or two weeks ago on House Bill 348, which would establish a pilot program to increase student attendance and graduation rates through financial awards and incentives, which is a fancy way of saying to pay students to go to school. It got a lot of press, a lot of coverage in the news. It is early on, and it is only a pilot program, so we'll pay attention to it, and I'm sure I look forward to everyone having an opinion on it. And that completes the legislation report. City Council report, Mrs. Hausum?
Yes, City Council has met several times since we've talked about, had a report from, on them. At their last December meeting, it was Joe D'Amio's last meeting. Joe has dedicated over 28 years of service to Strongsville and is now moving on to be the Clerk of Courts in Berea. I just wanted to wish Joe good luck one more time. Also in December, council voted on a few TIFs in Strongsville. While the city may be foregoing collecting taxes, they always make sure to make the school district whole. I just want to thank them for that and point that out. We really appreciate that. Also in December, they voted to move their meeting times to 7:00 PM. They were at 8:00 PM, and that gets really close to my bedtime, so I'm super grateful that the meeting is only starting at 7:00 PM now. At their January meeting, council appointed Mr. Brian Spring to the vacant seat for Councilman at Large. Welcome, Mr. Spring, and good luck. And we actually have Mr. Spring here in the audience. Thank you for being here, and we wish you well and good luck in your new endeavors. There were also several officers were promoted at the last meeting. Congratulations to them, and I'd like to thank them for their service to our city. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, and I just wanted, on behalf of the board, welcome Brian to our meetings. He, there was a, a battle. I hear it was a strong battle and a fight for who gets to be the Board of Education rep. And there was arm wrestling and all kinds of competition, but Brian won, and I'm sure he's excited to be here, and we're excited to have him here and continue the partnership we have with the City Council. So welcome and congratulations. Next is Strongsville Education Foundation. Mrs. Cobain or Mrs. Hausum?
The last meeting was January 11. They just discussed different options about having a fundraiser and when to have it next year. Dr. Raiba talked about, actually, a very interesting thing, the Student Advisory Board, which I found very interesting. And so they kind of got like a look at like what the kids were doing, an overview of the schools. I always say this, this, this group of people donate their time, get nothing for it, and give our kids a lot. So it's something that, you know, when you're looking on the website, look for the Strongsville Education Foundation. There's ways to donate. I'm sure they'd always like more people to attend their meetings. As of now, they've paid out seven of the 19 scholarships through the Archer Scholarship Foundation, and they work on grants, and they, you know, they have so much money, they just gave the track and field, I think they're going for some coaching thing, and they granted them 680, which we approved, I think George mentioned it. And there's been a few more requests that they're looking over. So I, I want people to realize how much these people really do do for our community and our kids. So that concludes my report.
Thank you. We'll roll into PTA Council.
PTA, hold on one second. Let me get my book. PTA, their last meeting, well, their meetings are always the first Thursday of the month. Katie Drake talked about Reflections, which is a really great program. If any of you ever want to look into it, look on their website. Kids come and they do all different kinds of artwork and stuff. And we've had, I think she said, we have two kids that are, are going to the Nationals, which is in March. So that's like a really, really great program, and I give Katie all the credit. She started this, and it's really, the kids have really done well. Their next fundraiser is a semi-formal, which is actually tomorrow, January 26th, for the fifth and sixth graders. Tickets, they were available, I don't know if they still are, but if you're interested, you can look into that. And the DAIR rep came to talk, and they are doing an ice skating thing, March 28th, for fifth to eighth graders. So that should be, that should be a nice thing. And Dr. Raiba kind of headed the last two weeks, met with some of the heads and teachers in the PTA, and they just kind of went over and coordinated how our parties and things like that. So the district could be more coordinated across all the schools. And those were very informative, and they went very well. I think everybody liked them. So other than that, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Sharon. Board Committee reports, first is Finance.
We have not met yet this year. The meeting is to be announced. Same is true for Policy.
We do have some policies on the, on our agenda tonight for adoption, so we'll, we'll get an update at that time. Facilities Committee?
I was on, I was at the Polaris meeting, and you were?
Our next, we did have a meeting last, last week where the Facilities Committee met. One of the topics was the idea of collecting the information we're going to need as a board to make decisions on critical infrastructure needs. This was a consequence of us, A, postponing to make decisions on critical infrastructure needs. This was a consequence of us, A, postponing the board, or the bond, the proposed bond, and going to that on the ballot in March. We've postponed that. So it was a, a very good session from a planning standpoint of, you know, what, what could we be looking at as critical repairs and what possible budgets were there, and just planning on being able to make informed decisions. Our next meeting is February 6th, 2024, at 6:30 in this building. And I invite anyone in the public who's concerned about the, our facilities to attend that meeting. It will be a important meeting. We'll be presenting the Facilities Committee report, which will summarize the data and the information. And I think it's, it's important for the community to know that we are looking at our, we call it our elementary facilities project, but it's all of our facilities. And in my mind, it's a seamless conversation about the needs of our district to make sure that we remain healthy, and not just healthy, but continue to grow. We're growing in a number of factors, attendance, programs, opportunities for our students, and our buildings are going to need to stay healthy and grow at the same time, and this is part of that prep and planning work. Business Advisory Council?
Our next meeting is Friday, February 9th at 7:30.
Thank you. Next on our agenda is the Consent Calendar. Adoption of the Consent Calendar. At this point of the agenda means that all meeting, all items appearing in this agenda denoted as Type Action Consent, which constitutes the Consent Calendar, are adopted by one single motion unless requested otherwise. Do I have any otherwise? Hearing none, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Howson, second by Ms. Stavcek. Any discussion? Hearing none, George, take the roll.
Mrs. Howson?
Yes.
Ms. Stavcek?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Mrs. Cobain?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes, and the motion carries. Superintendent's timely information. Cameron?
Thank you, Mr. Miko. Couple highlights we want to share around the district, starting at Maraski Elementary, Ms. Tedeschi's and Ms. Rush's classroom. They were recently teaching lessons on circuits. So kind of cool. They start with an online program called Gizmos, provided some information about how to work with wires, bulbs, batteries, creating open circuits, closed circuits, as well as parallel circuits. And then, once they had that basic foundation, they were tasked with being able to create a flashlight, use LED lights, wires, some tin foil or aluminum foil, and build their own circuits to create their own flashlights with a working switch. So it's just an example of how we can take a science concept that you could probably share with a video or share with a book, but to use some technology to see how it's done, and then to have that hands-on, practical application of it, and see if you can put that into action and apply to a real-life situation is a great example of what our staff is doing at Maraski. If we travel on to the middle school, our eighth grade English Language Arts Department has started their unit on Anne Frank and the Holocaust. So there, some of our students are reading a play, some are reading excerpts from Anne Frank's, Anne Frank's Diary. But not only are they learning about the experience, but they're looking at that from other perspectives as well. And as we take a look at the work that we're doing as a school district to integrate and coordinate curriculum with our durable skills or our model must-do incompetencies, writing is one of those skills that can take a lot of resiliency. And so the teachers have been working on selecting some certain I can, specific I can statements, and applying to develop that, those resiliency skills along with writing. And so they've been putting that work into action at the middle school, specifically in eighth grade. And I want to commend our eighth grade ELA teachers. They've been working extremely hard over this year with, they've been working with Ms. McKnight from our, our secondary literacy coach, coming together as a team, and have really been looking at what can we do to evolve and grow the work that we're doing as, as an English Language Arts Department in eighth grade to best meet the needs of our, our students. And so sometimes we talk about, hey, as you get more experience, it becomes more challenging to change. This is a group of educators that are always looking to improve and grow. So I just want to publicly say thank you for the work that they're doing to continue to develop and meet the best needs of our, of our kids. As we take a look at the high school, we're going to go around and, and highlight our music students. And so we're going to start, a lot of our students at this time of year are representing our school and community in, as part of a variety of groups in northeast Ohio and around the state. So starting off here, we've got a number of students, students as you can see in the bottom left, we've got Olivia, Cole, Samuel, Jamil, and Abby, who are a part of the Cleveland Orchestra Youth Orchestra, which is a select prestigious group to be a part of. Some similar names, but Olivia, Jamil, Jose, Daniel, Cole, Samuel, and Sedona are part of the OMEA District Four Honors Band, so that's a huge accomplishment for them, as well as Daniel, Olivia, Holly, Amelia, Abby, Cole, and Wyatt, who are a part of the Ohio Band Directors Conference Honors Band. So congratulations to those students that have been selected to be a part of those select groups in the area or across the state. As we move on to some, some orchestra recognitions, we've got Christopher, Natalie, Ben, Andrew, Jade, Aveniche, Sierra, and Olivia, who are a part of the OMEA's Northeast Regional Orchestra. As we take a look at the OMEA 2024 All-State Orchestra, what an honor that is. You've got Abby, Aveniche, and then some alternates in Ben, Andrew, and Olivia are there, as well as some all-state band members that are there, Jamil and Jose, and Daniel is an alternate. And we have one member of the Cleveland Orchestra Youth Chorus Chamber Ensemble, and that's Stephanie. So congratulations to her. And then as we go to the last highlight of this season for our music department, congratulations to our high school wind ensemble. Ms. Stavcek may have mentioned this at our last meeting. But next week, on Thursday, they've been selected to be one of only four high school bands in the entire state to perform at the OMEA Conference next Thursday. And it's going to be the first time in, what is that, 40 years, that we've been selected to perform at this event. So that's a phenomenal accomplishment, individual accomplishment, group accomplishment. We've always known and celebrate the strong arts program we have in orchestra, band, and vocal program. But here's some specific examples of this in action, and outstanding to know what our kids experience every day in our own school, put the opportunity to play with other elite musicians or sing with other elite vocalists around the region and state. And finally, we talked about parent-teacher conferences. For this year, we've got our last round of parent-teacher conferences coming up in the evening, as you could see in the next couple of weeks. So please check out your building principals newsletters, the district calendar, or your building calendar for those details. And come and partner with us and, and see your child's teacher and learn more about what is going on in the classroom and how we can work together to support your child's education. And finally, please put on the calendar, on Tuesday, February 13th at 6:00 PM, we are going to have the annual State of the Schools address at Strongsville Middle School. So we will continue to promote and share this, but we've come up with a new idea that I'm, I'm really excited about. And so what this is going to be is a briefer presentation from me, giving an overview of what's happening in the district. And then the majority of the night will be spent with the opportunity for parents, community members, anybody in attendance, to go around and actually meet with our students and our staff to learn anything from athletics to clubs to academics to sports to music, technology. We've got a group that's going to do live podcasting there. We've got Ozobots that'll be run. So if you take a look at everything from preschool to 12, to honors, to special education, to arts, music, and athletics, there is going to be, I'm going to ballpark, 25 to 30 different stations set up, and the stations are meant to be interactive. So you'll be able to go talk to our high school math teacher, and not just hear it, but interact as our students do in the math class at, at the high school. And we've got plenty of examples. So Dan's going to be helping sharing some teasers and promotions throughout, but it is a night to be there, to see what's going on in our school district, and hear firsthand from our students and teachers that are doing the work. So it will be, to be, to be clear, it will be really awkward if we're sitting there talking to ourselves. So we need people to come out and be a part of it and share and make it a great experience for our kids and staff that are there. And I think you're going to learn a lot and enjoy the interaction as well. So please share the word amongst your networks. We're going to share it on social media. It'd be great to have a great crowd out there to be a part of it. So with that, that concludes my timely information.
Cameron, some, an evening like that, you would think there'd be a ticket price. So I'm guessing 50, 40, $30 a person?
If you are SVP now.
How much, how much are the tickets?
You know, shockingly, if you, if you show up, it will be free. And we actually have food. We are featuring our cafeteria, our food service program, so you'll be able to go through the line, see the different stations we have, sample some food, as that part of it. So if I didn't entice you by all the exciting stations and interactive experiences, we will also have food.
I think it's a nice idea, and I, I'm, I'm optimistic that it will be well-attended, and it'll be a great way for us to showcase the work we do. Next on our agenda is Board of Education, Board Bylaws and Policies. This is third reading, so we do take action on them to adopt them. Be it resolved that the Strongsville City Schools Board of Education approves the listed bylaws and policies. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Howson, second by Ms. Stavcek. Any discussion? I will share for the community that all of these are, I don't want to say routine, but they make, make sure that our policies stay in compliance with, compliance with federal, state regulations. This is part of the regular cadence. We do this twice a year, and this is the updates to make sure that we're in line with all of the different rules we have to follow, again, whether it's federal or state requirements. Any other comments? George, take the roll.
Mrs. Howson?
Yes.
Ms. Stavcek?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
Ms. Cobain?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes, and the motion carries. Next is Board of Education Other. Do I have any Board of Education Others?
I mentioned at the last meeting that the Athletic Boosters are having their Night of the Races next Saturday, February 3rd. Tickets are still available, and you can purchase those online.
Also, this Saturday at Harvest Saloon, the Strongsville Youth Wrestling Club is having their annual fundraiser, Wingding.
What time again?
Five to eight.
Five to eight? Where?
Harvest Saloon.
What?
Wingding.
A wingding? You had me at wingding. I'm there. Any other others?
The Unified Sports Basketball Event tomorrow at Strongsville Middle School is from 10:00 to 12:45 PM. Is that what that's due?
And I just wanted to share with the community, I did this before, leading up to the election, the election in November, so I'm going to continue the offer. We do have a renewal levy on the ballot in March, and so if anybody wants to talk to a board member Saturday morning, you can come to my house. I will make coffee. I will have donuts. I can invite one board member to join me, but only one board member. But
Who wants donuts?
So you can all fight for it, like Brian fought, Brian fought for the privilege.
I can walk over. I can walk over.
And Laura can walk over. But again, it's important that the community have the opportunity to discuss them, to discuss anything that is under the purview of the school board, but primarily the election. So the phone number's on the website. Give me a phone call, and we'll set up coffee on Saturday. And then the other one is, I did want to share, in December, I usually, on the weekends, am challenged. On the one hand, there is hockey, and I can enjoy Strongsville hockey. On the other hand, I could listen to my favorite Taylor Swift album. And every weekend in, in the winter, I'm challenged to decide which one I can do. But tomorrow at 6:00 PM at Brunswick Auto Mart Ice Hockey Arena, you can satisfy both desires. So if there are any Ice Swifties in the audience, it will be Taylor Swift Night with the Strongsville Hockey Team against Normandy. I have no idea what marketing genius came up with this, but I'm going to find out.
So which one's your favorite album?
All of them. Taylor editions. I can't, I can't, we can't like the other ones, I think. According to my kids, that's the rule. So again, and then Saturday at the arena is Senior Night for the hockey team, which is always great. So that's my announcements. Any other others?
Just to say, add what Haley said, the middle school's having a unified sporting event tomorrow. I went to the high school one, and I went the year before that too, because it is so enjoyable to watch these kids, how excited they get. And it's just great to see all the kids supporting them. So, you know, it's just a great thing that they do that a lot of people don't even know is going on. And they come from all different schools, and they participate in basketball, and they have a great time, and it does your heart good. So I just wanted to thank the people that organize it, because they do a great job.
And you were just recently asked, not us, but the middle school was asked to become a Unified Sports National Banner School. So I'm interested to find out more about that and what that entails, and what you do when you become a banner school. Yeah, what do you do? I don't know. I'll let you know next meeting.
Next on our agenda is Meeting Notification. We have a work session on Thursday, February 8th at 7:00 PM in this building. And our regular Board of Education meeting will be held Thursday, February 22nd, 2024 at 7:00 PM in this building. We do have reason for executive session on the topics of?
To consider the employment of a public employee, and to prepare for and review negotiations or bargaining sessions with public employees concerning their compensation or other terms and conditions of their employment.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Motion by Ms. Stavcek, second by Mrs. Cobain. Any discussion? Take the roll.
Ms. Stavcek?
Yes.
Ms. Cobain?
Yes.
Mr. Miko?
Yes.
Mrs. Howson?
Yes.
Mrs. Bissell?
Yes.
We will enter into executive session at 8:10 PM. We have no expectation of further business. Thank you for your attention, and have a nice evening.